Hi, everyone. This is a Transportation Committee meeting of the Bloomington City Council. It's Wednesday, October 7th, 2020. Today, we have two items on the agenda. The first is Ordinance 20-17, which is to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic. And this will happen by replacing the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Program with the Traffic Calming and Greenway Program. The second ordinance is 2021, and that is to amend Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Storm Sewers, and Title 17 Construction Regulations. So our plan tonight for both ordinances is to hear from staff, 15-minute presentation, and then we'll come back to council. I would, if we can, like to limit our first round of questions to 15 minutes, hear from the public, and then come back again for more questions and discussions from council and staff. Sort of in general, trying to max out at an hour per ordinance, keeping in mind, we can still, you know, make changes later if we want, or have a second meeting if we are having fun here tonight. Okay. Does that sound good?
Madam Chair, are you gonna... Do you need a timer? Is somebody good at time?
I didn't think about a timer on our system.
Okay, it's fine with me.
Would you want to... No, would you want to time, please?
Ambivalent. If the departmentary wants a time, she can do it. Either way. It's up to you.
Oh, I see. I can also start one. Okay, I'll do it. Okay, so we're going to start with Ordinance 2017, amending Title 15, so to make traffic calming different. And tonight, we have from the administration, Mallory Rickbile, who is our Bicycle and Pedestrian Coordinator, and Beth Rosenbarger, our Planning Services Manager. So I'll turn it over to you two for your presentation.
Okay, great. Awesome. So I have, I have a perfect... I have some slides prepared for the presentation. So yes, like Councilmember Rosenbarger said, my name is Mallory Rickbile. I'm the Bicycle and Pedestrian Coordinator. So to give you some background context, I have been working on writing and re-envisioning a new policy for the past year and a half, as well as I have been working with two neighborhoods to navigate the current process, the NTSP. And also, I am a resident of one of the neighborhood's broad view that has been trying to navigate that process over the course of the past year. And so this has given me a lot of insight into the current program and helped to inform what a new process might look like. So I'm very excited to be here today and to talk to you about the policy. Next slide, please. So what we're going to talk about today is, I'm not going to bore you too much with a lot of background information, but we're going to discuss what do we mean by slow streets? Why are slow streets safer streets, and why are they more equitable streets? I'm going to point out a few of the components of the NTSP, which is the current process, and then cover the new process that we are proposing, or the proposed process, and discuss briefly why two processes, we feel is important, an important aspect of this new policy, as well as talk about some of the specifics of the program. So how much would it cost? Where would that come from? That kind of thing. And then talk a little bit about some of the internal considerations we've had for this policy leading us up to this point, and then open it up for questions. Next slide, please. So what do we mean by slow streets? Effectively, what we mean is speed compliance, or going the lawful speed. So not breaking the law. Next slide. And so the reason why it is unlawful to speed is because slower streets are safer streets, and speeding is a public safety concern. Next slide. So by virtue of the laws of physics, we know that speed affects the severity and likelihood of crashes. And so I have, we know that higher speeds yield more force. They also narrow the field of vision. Speeding vehicles will travel a greater distances before the brakes can be applied when the danger is perceived. Speeding vehicles travel greater distances before coming to a stop, and then speeding vehicles are likely to oversteer or understeer. Again, these are all based on sort of the physics, which I don't have a background in, but I do have, I do have some notes here that have reasons for that laid out, in case you want to get into that. But in the interest of time, I'll just keep moving forward. Next slide, please. So we know that even small changes in the, in speeding have an exponential relationship with the risk of a fatal injury. So if you can see on this graph, we see that a collision with a person driving a car at 20 miles per hour can result in a fatality 10% of the time. Whereas the 40 miles per hour that would be, result in a fatality 80% of the time. So again, there's that exponential relationship. And also, I think it is worth noting that injuries that do not result in fatalities are also very traumatic and can seriously impact one's mental, emotional, financial health for both the person and the people who are in that person's life. Next slide, please. So we know that nationally, speeding is involved in 37% of all fatal crashes on local streets, and this is about eight points higher than any other category of streets. And this information comes from the National Highway and Traffic Safety Association. Next slide, please. And so that then begs the question, why do we have, why is speeding so... Why, what has brought us here? And effectively, we have made streets where it feels very intuitive to speed. So the, this image that I have in the slides, it shows a cross-section of a street from the early 1900s, which is, which is the grid-like that we've seen, where we have narrow streets, sidewalks, houses that are closer to the street. And then the image below is an image of what is characteristic of the post-World War II economic expansion, or the emergence of the subdivision. And so the characteristics of this are much wider streets. So there's areas for parking on the streets, even though parking isn't often something that's in high demand in this space. There's setback houses. There's wide amplified curves. In this picture, there is a sidewalk, however, and as you will see, most of the residential areas that look like this often are built without sidewalks. As a result, we have, as a result, we have streets designed such that it feels intuitive to drive speeds at 40 to 50 miles per hour, similar to a major corridor or even a state highway, and that the only way to remediate this after the fact is with enforcement. This is not possible or ideal, or this is not ideal, is not possible 100% of the time. And so it becomes incumbent upon us to retrofit these streets for the behavior that we wish to see. Next slide. So this is a subdivision in Bloomington. This is Lexington in Park Ridge neighborhood, just north of campus. Again, you can see the setback house, the amplified curve. The, there's no sidewalks in this example. Next slide, please. This is Ralston, just, just east of Rockport. Again, there's no sidewalk. This is going downhill. And so you can see the setback houses. Next slide. This is Ulytic Drive on the north side of town, and you can see many of the same characteristics. And I would like to point out, there is a, there is a sign created by the people in the neighborhood in encouraging motorists to drive slow. And next slide, please. And this is a comparison to, this is Madison between Third and Fourth. And so you can see that there are visual cues to show that this, there are pedestrians in the area. So in addition to having parking that's utilizing, that constricts the street, slowing vehicles if they were to come in either direction, we also have, we also have street trees, we have tree plots, we have sidewalks, which shows the motorists or the people driving cars that, that this is an area where driving 40 to 50 miles per hour is not appropriate. Next slide. So why are slower streets more equitable streets? Next slide, please. Well, when we say income-sleet streets, what we're talking about is streets that have one user in mind, drivers, instead of a range of users, which is, which includes bicyclists, pedestrians. We have a lot of incomplete streets, or we have incomplete streets in our communities, and many of them look much like the residential streets that I just showed you. The single user may have not been the intent of the design of the street, however, that has become the outcome. So we know that incomplete streets disproportionately affect cost burden households. Counties where there's more than 20% of households which have incomes that fall below the federal poverty line, their pedestrian fatality rate is over 80%, the higher than the national average. And likewise, we know that communities of color are affected disproportionately. The fatality rate for Latinos is 60% higher than that for white people, and the rate for African-Americans is almost 75% than for whites. We know that, that these, that incomplete streets are also associated with adverse health effects, such as asthma, COPD, cardiovascular disease, and that these effects are amplified when car-centric communities can, can make it more difficult to access nutritious foods, placed to be physically active without the use of a car. That essentially limits the ability for one who cannot drive, who is unable to drive, who doesn't want to drive, who can't afford to drive, or too young to drive. They can't attain these resources without relying on someone to provide transportation for them. And finally, we know that 60% of people who are interested in biking as a form of transportation are interested but have concerns for their safety, and a disproportionate number of these people who fall into this category are women. So when we look at equity, we think about what would it mean if we had streets that allowed two-car households to become one-car households, thereby reducing the yearly expenses on average by $6,000 to $9,000 per year? And that's an average cost. Next slide, please.
I just want to let you know, you're at four minutes.
Oh, thank you. So I have four minutes left? Or I've gone?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a slide with local data, and what we have is housing and transportation costs as, over the median income. So the areas that are orange and pink are areas where the income, that there isn't that much money at the end of the month after housing and transportation is factored in. And so we do see a cluster of the purple dots, which are, indicate crashes where there have been injuries. Next slide, please. So there was a council special committee on street design in 2012, and there are key recommendations which have been put into the new policy, which I'll talk about in just a little bit. Next slide. And it is also part of our comprehensive and transportation plan goals, which I have listed here as well. Next slide. So the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Program, it has a resident-led process, which I'll talk about in just a little bit. The barriers to entry are high, the barriers to installation are extremely high, and we know that this, that this environment requires, or this requirement favors those with both time and privilege and trust that the city will react appropriately to be able to navigate this process. Neither are metrics connected to the success of the program in any way. Next slide, please. So then the question becomes, why do we need to process this as a part of the new policy? Simply to respond to public safety concerns, as well as to implement the high, the high priority bike network per the transportation plan. Both of these things right now are not possible the way that the code and the policy are written. So we needed to update that in order to live out the plans that we have in place. Next slide. So the Traffic Calming and Greenway process, it runs much like a yearly grant cycle. There is an evaluation methodology that is created by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission, which looks at where are there instances of high, vulnerable road users, and where are there, where is a prevalence of behaviors that can cause harm? And so there is an annual cycle where we will release an RFP. We will do outreach to neighborhood associations, to people who contact me, to report speed noncompliance in their behavior, or in their neighborhood, as well as to release it to the public via a press release as well. And so this is a much more, or the streamlined process for, in terms of being able to navigate the process and being sure that we can set the expectations of what's possible with the funding that we have available. Next slide. So the staff-led process is much the same. However, we have taken into account that, as staff, many of the projects that we are hoping to implement have already been established through the transportation process. So that makes the assessment and project selection for those projects much, much more streamlined. But it also does allow us to interject when we do find a situation where the level of risk is such that we feel that we need to make changes to the street environment without, without having to go through the organizing as part of the resident-led process. Next, next slide, please. So program deliverables. So here's what we're talking about when we say traffic calming devices. We have speed cushions. I want to point out that the speed cushions that we're talking about reflect the image that's on the top, rather than the speed bumps that you would see in a parking lot. So the speed cushions that are pictured here, in the top picture, they have a, they can, they can be designed so as to fit the behavior that we would like to see. So driving the legal speed limit, 20, 25 miles per hour. When you think of speed bumps, you often think of the ones that require you basically to come to a stop and inch over. That's not what we're talking about. We would also have the ability to install bumpouts, pavement markings, and signage as part of the resident-led process. Next slide. So then, some of the questions that we had, oh, one of the things that I also wanted to mention is we would allocate about $50,000 for this program in the year, and that would purchase about 10 pairs of these asphalt of speed, speed cushions that I had mentioned, which we imagine would be about two projects per year. Internal considerations, we wanted to include a removal process, but we wanted to make sure that if we installed something, that it wasn't going to be quickly removed after the fact. We discussed, is it important to have an annual cycle, or can this kind of be open and on-demand? And we felt that a consistent process would allow the predictability for staff on my end, and any potential applicants, because there seems to be a seasonality for when people are really concerned about speeding noncompliance in their behaviors, and that's in, in the fall and in the spring. Is it too complicated? That is a question I get. We do feel it's not complicated. It's just a little more nuanced. Most people will not be, will not be working with both processes. The staff-led processes has its own, its own track for which, and purpose for what it will be used, and the resident-led process is much more streamlined than the current policy that we have. And that's the most of what people will interact with when they interact with this program. Next slide, please. Questions, comments?
Okay, great. Thank you. That was just a little overbuds. I just, that was good. Should we, do you all want to go right into questions? I have a very general one that might help us a little. I would like to know if we could talk a little bit about the differences between the two plans?
Sure.
Well, not the two processes, but the current process, why it's not working, and then how the new one, the details in the new one that solved that.
So do you want me to talk about where there are barriers in, in the new process? Is that what I understand?
Sorry, no. So why, why we're making a new process? So what? Or how the new process is alleviating the barriers from the old process?
Yeah.
That, that, I think.
Okay. So I think the, fundamentally, the difference between when the, the current process says traffic calming should be hard to attain. And ultimately, in the 20 years since the policy has been written, we recognize that, that with vehicles getting larger, and that this is, and with our comprehensive plan changing, that in fact, like, that we want there to be an outlet for this. However, we need to be sure that those resources are allocated in a way that is most effective and most efficient use of public funds. And so because of that, we turned it into a grant cycle where residents, organized residents can come together and put together an application, and then we will rank those based upon a methodology that doesn't exist in the first policy. It's more about, can you get ballots returned? Can you get signatures? Can you, do you have the social structure in place that will allow you to be able to organize the people who live around you in order to get support for this? And we know that, that disproportionately means that people who are living in low-income areas will not have that same ability to reach that outcome as we would like to see.
May I add a little on the end of that, Mallory?
Yeah.
Okay. So Beth Rosenbarger, Planning Services Manager. So what Mallory was saying, in terms of what are some of the current barriers in the current process, the NTSP, people have to sign a petition first to request traffic calming, and then there are a lot of steps, and then a step within that process is that households have to return a ballot to City Hall. And of the, you define an area where the project area is, and from that area, 51% of the households must return a yes vote. And so that is like if our president was only elected, if 51% of the population voted for the president, and not if 51% of voters voted for the president. So it's based on the number of households there, and of those households requiring that 51% of people return a ballot. And those ballots are actually based on if people like it or not. And there, the current process does not collect any data about if it is working to reduce speeds, if it is creating a safer street, and anything like that. So the proposed process requires people to get signatures to show that people in the street and people who live there are interested and want to see something change. But it does not require voting, because I think that the threshold is way too high, and voting has no connection with if the street has become safer.
Okay, thank you. Question from committee members?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I've already forgotten it. Can you go back a few slides? Keep going. That's going to come back to me. I don't remember now. It was a good question, but it's gone.
Okay, okay. Other questions? Okay, Ms. B. Markman?
Yes. I want to just get confirmation. Another big change here is that the, the street segments that receive traffic calming will not be in city code, and so the city council will not have to approve application of traffic calming measures. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. They are, they are, the way that it's written is they need approval for removal, but not installation.
And what is the logic behind removing the city council overview?
Well, I had to clarify and point to that. Mallory, in the current process, does city council have final approval whether the calming is installed? Or is it only through the voting process that traffic calming is installed, and then that is added into code?
That's, that is correct. So you need to get through the voting in order to get to city council.
So my understanding is that the current process isn't based on approval by putting it into the table in code, but was only based on people voting, and then the traffic calming would be installed, and then at some point, it was updated in the table in code. But...
Okay, so it never really needed approval of council. It was just that to revise our code where we list these places, we needed to vote on revising the code, kind of.
I'll say that removing that table, in all honesty, the intent was not about removing oversight from council. It's that the tables are horrible to maintain, where we want to move toward mapping and just having all of it mapped, and where, I don't know, I'm sure we would be happy to do a report or something similar if there was something else you thought of. But the intent of removing it was actually the process of maintaining and keeping a literal table up to date of locations.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Mr. Smith?
Hi. Thanks, Ms. Rickbit. How do, I'm gonna mash your, your last name, Rick.
Rickbile.
Rickbile. I tried to say it the other day, and I mashed it pretty well.
German through Canada, so it's kind of weird.
With a name like Smith, I guess you...
I know. I've never had to worry about that. So I really appreciate the presentation. It's great. And I, we've contacted you a little bit because I live in Parker East, and there's some, some of my neighbors on Morningside Drive are there. They want to figure out how to slow the traffic down. So one of the questions that came up was, if, do the process still needs a number of people in the area to vote to... And correct me if I'm wrong, to vote to say yes?
To sign a petition.
To sign a petition. So what is the affected area for including those individuals? So for instance, this is the question somebody asked me, if they're on Morningside Drive, but there's a cul-de-sac that's, you know, Hampton Corridor or whatever, and it's... If there's a couple of cul-de-sacs on Morningside, do you count all the houses, and then you need to get 51% of all those houses as well? Or is it just the people on Morningside Drive?
Yeah. So there are, so we have, for the, our petition part, we say we would like to get signatures from 51% of affected households, or 24 households, whichever is the lesser. And then we define affected households as, let me just pull it up right, as residents and property owners of record located two lots, not to exceed 300 feet of streets affected by the proposed traffic calming installation. So in the...
Can you clarify that for me? What is that? What did that mean?
So it means that largely, at, at the most, in, like, to give you an example, on countryside, there were 360-some households, and so that required signatures from 146 different households because of the way that the streets were, were made. And so we have taken that, and we've said, the most that you'll ever have to, or signatures that you'll have to get is 24. And that's based upon the program in Boston, that they highly recommended reducing the barrier for the petition signatures.
Great. And so that's to petition the city to consider traffic calming devices?
To put forth an application for being evaluated with the other projects, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. That was really... Okay. Well, thank you. That was really, that was really helpful.
Yes.
And the notice that Mallory described, we just followed the Plan Commission notification process so that it could be consistent, so that people would be getting a letter. So even if you weren't one of the people who signed on, maybe, if you don't know that it's being requested, you would then get a letter that says, hey, someone is looking at installing traffic calming on your street. There's a request being reviewed. You have an opportunity to comment either by going to this website and submitting a comment or attending the hearing.
Thank you. And that's, that's a function that the city does for the affected area?
Yes.
Thank you.
We love mailing letters.
I know you do. Thank you very much.
I, I have a follow up on this exact topic, but Mr. Rowland, if yours is on this topic too.
No, no, go, go ahead.
Okay, it's just about the 24. So I'm sorry, Ms. Rick Byall, did you say affected households is, okay. Owners located within two lots of the affected street and then not to exceed 300 feet?
That's correct.
Okay. I would like to ask, I think, where did the number 24 come from? Only because I was talking to a resident on, down my street, Howe Street. And if you look at the area between Rogers and Walker, there are 51 homes. So getting 24, I assume we could like go to some of those side streets, but getting 24 would still be very close to that 50%.
Yes. Um, so Howe Street, I, I think the, the, the main limitation for the, so the difference between Howe Street and a subdivision is, is sort of the design of the street. So the amplified curve, the many lots, these, these pockets and cul-de-sacs, which like in the case of countryside can be 300 households. Whereas Howe with 51% is a little bit of a situation or is a little bit of a different situation due to the fact that it was, it is a more historic neighborhood. And so that has more of that grid-like design that is, is less, less of a circuitous route with, with households on, on either side and with those design aspects in mind.
Oh, it's just very difficult to pick a number, honestly. So.
Okay.
Mallory researched and even had a conference call to walk through the policy that Boston uses. So it wasn't just like she just read it and was like, okay. So she did a lot of research. And we're sort of like, some people think the number is too low. Some people think it's too high. It's, it's very challenging to decide what the threshold should be. And so modeling it off of a community that had a really good program in place, we thought was effective. But I think, I don't know, I think reasonable minds could differ on what that number or threshold should be.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rowland?
Yes, okay, I remembered my questions. First of all, can we get the slides sent to us? Have they been already distributed?
Not the slides, we can send them.
Please do, thanks. How much demand do you all expect there is per year for traffic calming? How much do you anticipate under this program? And what portion of that is planning staff generated versus neighborhood generated?
Yeah, so I get about three, there is a seasonality to it, like I said before. I get about three to five calls per week. And so I would estimate that that's about 100 to 120 calls and new reports related to speed non-compliance in residential areas. And then as far as staff projects, other than the things that are in the transportation plan, that really, I, I, that really doesn't exist, that really doesn't ever come to the, the, the top of, of, of the, or rise to the, the level of the top of projects for traffic calming.
Okay. The other question is, among the tools that you can work with, is the possibility of raised intersections or raised or different colored intersections? Or, you know, like intersections that emphasize a pedestrian, are they part of your toolbag?
That's a good nail question. I think the reason why we chose the speed cushions was due to the price versus the efficacy. And I, I simply don't know the efficacy of color changed walkways.
Well, in particular, I'm interested in like raised, raised sections of like raised crosswalks, for example.
Okay, like on, on Rogers where it crosses, I guess, over by City Hall. Yes.
Yeah.
It's my, it's my understanding that those are far more expensive, which would, which wouldn't be conducive to the amount of funding that we have for this.
Definitely a treatment we would consider. I would say they would be more, our assumption right now is that would be a tool we use with the greenways. Because part of it is, you know, I guess just about prioritizing and prioritizing.
In other words, what you're saying.
But yes.
What you're saying is, when you're turning a road into a greenway, that's when you would give it the royal treatment and do things like raise crosswalks and paint intersections and the like.
Well, you know, I don't want to, I always love when we choose our words together, council and row. I don't want to call it royal because it's very affordable, you know? In the scheme of things, a raised intersection, so I would say, yes, they are definitely tools that we are happy to use. But because a raised intersection is probably $100,000 at least compared with speed cushions that are about $5,000 a pair. So it just depends on the space. And that, yes, we would prioritize funding that is going toward calming and a network compared to maybe calming that is serving, that is potentially not part of a network, but still obviously in need of, of some level of traffic calming.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Other questions, Mr. Smith?
Is Morningside Drive a greenway? And does that have a different?
Sorry, I just nodded, but yes, yes, it is.
Does that have a different, does that push us in a different direction on how we need to look at it? For traffic calming or slowing the, the speed down?
Yes, I would say it pushes us, I'm sorry, Mallory, I just took this answer.
No, no, it's, you're the wonder.
Okay, um, yeah, so Morningside is identified as a neighborhood greenway in the transportation plan. And it is identified in the priority bicycle network. So that is, you know, we want to prioritize funding for projects in that network. So yes, it would change it. And I think that could change it to a staff-led process so that we are planning for what year we're doing that, planning ahead to allocate that funding and design. And, you know, like scheduling meetings with the neighborhood to, to work on that design too.
Do my neighbors need to do something different?
No, I mean, good question. The thing is, right now, that's in phase two. So we would be looking at like four years from now. So potentially, if I guess they wanted to apply to the, to the resident-led program, maybe it could be considered. That's sort of something we haven't honestly parsed out or figured out how to deal with. If residents are calling for traffic calming on a street that is identified as a greenway, would we swap the order that we were planning to install it? And, and we haven't figured that out, I guess. So that's something to think about.
Yeah, I, I guess I bring that up. There's some young moms with their children and families and they're, they're nervous. They're newer residents of that area and they're worried that, you know, the speed is dangerous. And it, and it is, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Beem Monkman?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on the funding. So is the $50,000 for both, is that amount supposed to cover both residential, resident-initiated and staff-initiated projects for one year?
No. So we were saying for the resident-led, that we would be looking to allocate a maximum of 50K a year. And the other portions that we are able to allocate would be going to the staff-led to work on building up the priority network and addressing areas where it comes to our attention that we need to be addressing, where we find residents aren't calling for it, or they are, but it's definitely a safety concern that we, this process also allows the city to say, we're not going to wait for residents to do this. We, we can identify this issue and, and act on it.
Okay, great. So there's separate funds for that. And is this coming from the general fund? Or is this the alternative transportation fund? Or do you know?
Our assumption right now is just using the alternative transportation fund. So that's the neighborhood of 350 to 375 a year that we have kind of on the staff side, staff. But I mean, like city side, and then over 300 goes to council sidewalk. This is something we haven't figured out. If council sidewalk wanted to allocate money, if instead the 50K for the resident process came from council sidewalk, I think that could be a good option. The difference would be council sidewalk chooses their own projects. And the entire purpose of this would be that it is selected through a set process. So, so that's something that could be discussed as an option though, too.
So 500,000 for the resident-led initiatives and about 100,000 for the staff-led initiatives.
I think you added some extra zeros in there. 50,000 for resident-led and then 300 for city-led.
300,000, okay.
And then there's also the council sidewalk money, but that is allocated by council sidewalk committee.
Wow, 300,000 for city-led projects, aside from council sidewalk.
I don't know which direction the wow means, you know, like.
No, I think that's good.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowland, and then let's potentially go to public, pause with us for a minute and go to public if you all want.
This is my last one, but it's based, thank you, it's based on Councilwoman Smith's comment just now. I, I asked in an earlier question about the divide between neighborhood-led and staff-led. Can you tell us about the, the need that dictates that significant split? Tell us what staff is thinking about where traffic calming needs to be done the most? I mean, you know, how is that first 300,000 going to be spent?
Yeah. So the way that we figured is, you know, there's reactive speed, speed control, which is the resident-led, which we see as the resident-led, the speed cushions. And then there's the more proactive approach of the greenways and reducing the amount of vehicle miles traveled through the expansion of our network. And so we felt that our greater priority was to be able to see the network and to be doing these proactive greenways. And then allowing for an option, obviously for residents, to be able to affect change in their neighborhoods.
So that money isn't just going to speed cushions, that's development of greenways?
Yes.
Okay, well, that makes sense. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, committee members, are you okay if we pause for our public comment portion? Okay, and then come back. Okay, I can't see that many, Mr. Byall, if you want to unshare your screen. Okay, thank you. If anyone out there wants to comment, you would just need to raise your hand. I'm not seeing anything.
Greg Alexander.
Okay, great. I think Greg Alexander would like to speak. And Mr. Alexander, if you'd like to go ahead, if you're unmuted.
Hello, thanks. I'm Greg Alexander. Obviously, this is a great improvement over the previous product, process. It's, I just want to draw your attention to that, the extreme necessity of not giving neighbors essentially design veto like the old process did. And we, we never do this for, for car-centered projects. We never allow neighbors to say, oh, you can't have more traffic on my street, which is, which is crazy, you know, because a lot of neighbors would really like the opportunity to do that. But when it comes to these pedestrian projects, you know, we, we sent out a survey for Fourth and Rogers. There was a calming there almost 10 years ago now, I guess. And they, they sent a, a survey of three different design options, basically saying, asking the neighbors, screw bikes or support bikes? And of course, they chose screw bikes. And it's, it's not a very successful process when, when safety is, is subject to community approval. And I just want to share an anecdote. My mom lives in, in Green Acres and they had on their neighborhood association mailing list just constantly, they always have complaints about, it's called Hillsdale, it's kind of at the edge of their neighborhood. And it, it, people use it as a, as a cut through to, to get to the bypass. And just, you'll see 40, 50 miles an hour. It's designed as a very wide, very suburban street. It's not like a grid street in any way, no stop signs in between those two, I don't think. And eventually someone said, you know, why don't we just ask the city to put a stop sign at Seventh and Hillsdale? And then the naysayers came out and people were starting to use names and, and raised voices. Because if you put a stop sign there, it'll take them an extra three seconds to get home in the evening. And we, we can't be having that. And there's this kind of equity question because my mom doesn't drive. And so for her, it's a no-brainer. She wants the stop sign. She wants to actually calm traffic on, on Hillsdale any way that we can. And for some people, they drive and so they have a more conflicted interest. But the interesting thing about that to me is the people who drive, who said, no, you can't put a stop sign in my way, are the same people who said, we have to calm traffic here. They said, we have to calm traffic here, but they didn't realize that means I have to slow down too. And we, we can't allow this kind of toxic driver psychology to define an engineering process. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. Anybody? Okay, I think we can go back to committee comments and questions. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Rowland?
I got a couple of comments. I'm looking at the grid of Green Acres here. And it started out gridded and as it moves further east, it gets all twisty and turvy. But I, I note what Mr. Alexander said about Hillsdale. It was a relatively high-speed suburban street and, and when I lived in that neighborhood. I was the person who formed the ad hoc Special Committee on Street Design and Engineering Standards back in 2012. And I remember those days fondly, but it was in the aftermath of council objecting to the large bulk of planned roundabouts back in 2011. But it was a, an eye-opening look at the way that people think about street design, namely that they don't, they, they, they didn't much. And so it's really gratifying to see that slide that shows older neighborhoods and their narrower streets and newer neighborhoods and their huge wide streets with big setbacks. And how, I, I've said for a long time that our streets are designed to encourage driving. Kind of former Councilman Mayor talked about the sleeping policeman, which is an idea that apparently Scandinavian, Norwegian or Swedish, that the design of the street is a latent enforcer of speed limit. So anything we can do to slow traffic down, I think, is not just an order, but overdue. And I am probably going to be lining up my current street to get involved with this because we have a two-block length of University Street where there's no stop. And, you know, we see cars driving on a fast, on a very narrow street that necessarily needs to be cushioned. So I'm very happy to see, this, I'm, I'm, I'm finally, now that I've finally seen sort of the program presented in totality, I'm enthusiastic about it. It's idea that's overdue. And I think everyone is going to find it more agreeable, even those people who don't want traffic calming because at least it'll be easier to navigate. But I think that the times have changed and traffic calming. But I think that the times have changed and traffic calming is the order of the day rather than an afterthought. So I'm very glad to see this program. Very happy to get rid of a really cumbersome piece of city code. Just, oh God, it was, it's always been a chore for 20 years. So amen to all of you and let's get her done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from committee members? Ms. Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I'm wondering if Ms. Rick Pyle is available for parties? Not parties, but public information, any kind of public engagement events? Because that presentation was just excellent. I mean, it just spells it out, why we need to take back control of our streets. And I think every car centric focused person should listen to it. So thank you very much for that. And I think this, this process seems very clear to me. It's much more straightforward. And as Mr. Alexander said, it cannot be, you know, hijacked by people who don't care enough about safety. I, I liked that quote. I wrote it down. Safety should not be subject to public approval. I think that's a good one. And I think that, that it really does benefit everyone in the end, even if, you know, they may not realize it initially, but it makes a street, you know, just more comfortable to, to walk down, even for people who usually drive. But, you know, most of us will walk to the, the mailbox or walk to a neighbor every now and then. And, and I think this, this will be a benefit in that respect. So I think it's been well planned and thought out. And I especially appreciate that this also gives a clear path for staff to implement our transportation plan with some clear criteria and public input from the bike ped commission. You know, we're not eliminating any public hearings here. I think we're just making them more streamlined and, and the criteria more clear. So I, I'm very much in favor of this change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, okay, Mr. Smith?
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you as well. Very much for reworking the policy. It looks fantastic. Got everybody all excited on my side of town. So, so thank you very much.
I'm happy to talk to anyone and everyone about traffic calming anytime.
Well, if you got Park Ridge, you know, you got it in the bag, I think.
That's right.
Okay, I think everything that's been said is really lovely. I'll echo all of that. I have like one minor question about that 24 number and the 51%. Just really thinking about my street still. I'm wondering if we might want to adjust, adjust that percentage so that if it is a very small affected space, you know, maybe 30% of households would be enough. You know, you all did the research here, so I don't know the rationale between 24 or 51, the lesser of the two. But if we had something like 30% and that was less than like 24, so on how streets, that would in theory, right, be like 15. I didn't really do that math, but two thirds, one third, something like 15 households. It just seems like still on a street like mine, it would be impossible to do traffic calming. And I'm just like thinking into the future with the hospital redevelopment and Second Street becoming, you know, very nicely like more of a neighborhood street and then potentially people feeding down Howard or something. It, it seems like it would almost be impossible to do resident led. But I see where it could still be staff, a staff designated project, something like that. But I'm just like wondering about that tiny part, but we can also talk offline about it because, I mean, just, you know, threw out next, this week before, before council again.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about it. I'm open.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if, if you're concerned, we could also go to a second hearing. There's no, is, I don't know if there's a rush on it or not, but.
I think it's so minor that it could, I could just get a question answered via email and then we can discuss it at council, so we don't do another round of this. I think we're so close to finished, potentially finished. Okay, so I don't want to take up everyone's time on that. I would say, like I say, of course, I think this is great. You know, I, when I, when I see that though, you know, you're getting 100 to 120 calls a week. Not that every call warrants speed cushions, but two a year, right? It's just a long time to take on making our streets safer in this, in this space. Of course, you guys will do it, the staff will do it in, as well. But I don't know, I don't consider it a lot of money. So it's sort of my normal spiel of this is wonderful. I would like it to be more, like, can I have more, please? So I just, you know, the amount of money we put towards cars is still not anywhere close. It's still just so much more, I mean, millions more than what we're devoting here. So I don't know what I said, but I meant to say 100 to 120 calls per year. I don't know what I said. I wrote down three to five calls per week, sorry, three to five calls per week. Okay. So, right, I mean, I would of course just love to see this thing blown up to like a very high level. So maybe we can consider this a pilot. Okay, so that's it. I'm rambling. I'm sorry. So any further comments, questions, committee members or staff? Staff?
I'm sorry, this might not be for here. When we take this to council, is the, well, we would love to just give the full presentation that we gave here? Or is that considered, you know, we're, we're still learning the committee to council structure. That's all.
It would be wonderful to give it in most. Yeah, most, we usually do the same presentation again for everyone and then we give, we give a quick report. And then we have discussion. Mr. Volan?
Just Madam Chair, on this point, while I really appreciated the presentation, as a committee member, I don't expect the full presentation. I expect that that's what you give, you give the full presentation to the full council. We, committee members should be expected to be familiar with the legislation and go right into, you know, take a very brief presentation and write into questions. Generally speaking, that's, that's the expectation we're trying to set for committees. So with, with the next side coming up, you can, you can, you don't have to give the full presentation if you just want to hit the highlights because we're already like, with the transportation committee, we're familiar with transportation issues. We've looked at this issue before we came to the meeting. So that's what you should expect from us at any rate.
I would like to add to that, that in the packet, it doesn't necessarily give all those details of the rationale and, you know, the speed, what speeding causes and how dangerous that can be. And so I, I think it was wonderful to assume we have read the packet, but you're, then, you know, you're giving the history and why this is necessary. So I thought that was really wonderful. Okay, any other comments?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move, oh, sorry. I'd like to move that we make a recommendation tonight on this ordinance.
Yes, that sounds wonderful. So let's.
I think I need a second.
Do that. So do I? I think I'm even allowed, okay, that's fine. I think I'm even allowed to just do it without anybody, though, aren't I?
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. Okay, okay, so this is for a due pass recommendation. I'll just call roll Mr. Smith.
Yes?
Ms. Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Volan?
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberger? Yes, okay. Okay, so our recommendation is yes for council next week, four yeses. Okay, and that concludes this portion of our evening. Thank you so much for presenting.
Point of order. It's actually two weeks because next week is budget. So I think we're taking back up on the 21st.
Okay, so this will be before council on the 21st for anyone listening and marking your calendars.
Right.
Wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just looking at my notes. Okay, so now we will discuss ordinance 2021, which is to, where are my notes? Okay, to amend title 12, street sidewalks and storm sewers, and title 17, construction regulations. So with us tonight from the administration, we have Sarah Gomez, Public Improvement Manager, and Neil Copper, interim transportation and traffic engineer. So if you two would like to go ahead, we budgeted 15 minutes for your presentation.
Good evening, Transportation Committee. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Neil Copper. I'm the interim transportation and traffic engineer. A number of staff members have put work into this ordinance tonight. I'm joined by our public improvements manager, Sarah Gomez, from the planning transportation department. Ms. Gomez is truly a subject matter expert for this topic, so I'm going to hand things over to her.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yay. I don't know why I did that. I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you, Neil. Good, and good evening, everyone. Again, Sarah Gomez, Public Improvements Manager. Tonight I'm presenting the proposed title 12 updates for chapters 12.08 and 12.10, and we'll be happy to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. First, the purpose of title 12, chapter 12.08, title excavations, is to ensure staff has a permit for excavation in the city right of way from utility companies, developers, contractors and constituents who need to excavate in the city right of way. The conditions of the permit ensure insurance and bonding are in place and repairs are to excavations. And repairs to excavations are to a standard that protect public facilities. For an example of title 12's purpose, I included two photos on the slide. The photo on the left is, is an example of a street cut repair that is done to city standard. And the photo on the right is an example of what can happen to public facilities if 12.08 didn't exist. The planning and transportation department, particularly engineering staff, has been discussing revisions to chap, chapter 12.08 for a few years. The discussion of revisions was in response to staff concerns regarding the fee schedule enforcement and lack of right of way use language. These discussions resulted in the list as goals shown on the slide to address staff concerns. There's been addition to these goals over the last year and that addition includes updating the language about sidewalk closures and walkarounds. I will go over some of the more significant updates that address the goals set forth in the upcoming slides. As well as addressing staff concerns, the goals and proposed changes are relevant to the following programs from chapter six of the comprehensive plan. Enhance standards for maintenance of traffic and ADA compliance approvals. Manage right of way use and excavation policies, permits and work to meet desired standards and specifications. And inspect all capital projects, city and non-city to assure compliance with applicable standards and specifications. After review and analysis, such as researching right of way permitting and use code for similar cities, comparing fees using the current fee schedule to the fees using the proposed fee schedule, reviewing other violation enforcement language within the Bloomington Municipal Code, coordinating with public work staff regarding right of way use and reconstruction requirements, and discussions with various stakeholders regarding the walk around language. Staff came up with a chapter 12.08 and 12.10 draft. The draft includes numerous small updates as well as larger updates as highlighted on this and following slides. First, right of way use. We do not currently have a mechanism to charge fees for right of way use or issue fines when maintenance traffic plans aren't followed or the right of way is used without permission, causing issues for the public. We would like to require a fee for contractors to use right of way to reflect the inconvenience that is caused to the public and the staff time spent reviewing and following up on right of way use. Secondly, IMUTCD or Indiana Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, compliant maintenance of traffic plans are already required in practice. This provision would codify our current practice of requesting this for street lane, bike lane and sidewalk closures. The image on this slide is an example from chapter six of the IMUTCD that shows temporary traffic control for a one lane closure utilizing flaggers. Lastly, we would like to codify requirements for contractors to leave us with a better finished product. For example, when developers build new buildings and hardscapes, we are frequently left with cobbled together streets with patches here and there, typically for various utility installations. We would like to require complete mill pave and stripe for excavations that occur on streets paved within the last three years. Fees is the next highlight. And fees should reflect amount of city time and resources spent on permit review, inspections, paperwork and add and wear and tear to the city's infrastructure. For example, a fiber boring project does not take, does take time to inspect and does cause undue wear and tear on the infrastructure. But 75 cents per lineal foot leads to permits that cost tens of thousands of dollars to supply a neighborhood with fiber. The fee is prohibitive and fees should be reduced for projects that benefit the public that take costs away from city capital projects. For example, sidewalk projects should not be $1 per square foot resulting in thousands of dollars in fees for a project that results in new sidewalks. Digging in the dirt should not be as expensive as tearing up a brand new road. Currently, it's a dollar per square foot regardless of what you're digging into, whether it be street or a tree plot. Fees from excavation in the right of way are currently in title 17 and we propose to move those to title 12. So we've included a comparison here of a project using the current fee structure versus a project using the new fee structure. This particular project is uses our example due to the fact that the city did receive pushback from the developer about the cost related to these improvements. So for a larger project on the south side of city in 2019, a large section, section of side path was closed and widened as an improvement. And additionally, two new sections of side path, each measuring approximately 150 feet, were built within a previously unimproved section of the city's right of way. This project provides the city nearly 1,200 feet of new or improved side path. And under our current fee schedule, the total fee would be $18,423.50 with 9,603 being a fee for constructing and proving the side path. Under the proposed, proposed fee schedule, the total fee would be $5,486.33 where $976 pertains to the new or improved sidewalks. I will add to that, that that, that could, that fee could change because the sidewalk closure fee is actually per week. And so this is, this example is specifically based on it being closed for one week, which is only $100. Okay. As well as updating fees, we have proposed updated bond amounts. Bonds are in place in case a contractor fails to complete their work. The bond ensures the city has the ability to repair at the contractor's expense instead of at the city's expense. Although this was not one of our initial goals, we believed it would be more clear for staff and the public to do away with the current bond structure and make defined amounts for typical work that takes, excuse me, that takes place. Currently, there is a required $5,000 bond that has a stipulation that any work that may cost over $5,000 should be of the estimated cost plus 25%. It can be time consuming for staff to check estimates for so many permits and this will help eliminate some of that. Some work, such as street cuts, should require a larger bond due to the larger cost to do a street cut repair if the contractor doing the work fails to finish repairs or fails to repair the cut to standard. The image on this slide shows a small portion of the proposed bond amount schedule. So this is not the full schedule. The new schedule includes right of way use bond amounts such as street closure, storage of materials and sidewalk closures. Speaking of sidewalk closures, the next highlight is obstructing sidewalk and walk around requirements. This is one of the more substantial changes we are proposing. The photo here is of a walk around. Just for some context, as somebody that might not know what a walk around should look like. The proposed changes are intended to condense the previous three sections that existed in chapter 12. the proposed changes are intended to condense the previous three sections that existed in Chapter twelve point zero four into one section and add language that requires compliance with Indiana Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, Public Rights-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines, and Occupational Safety and Health Administration Guidance. Without going into excessive detail here, I do want to relay a bit of information on how PROAG and IMUTCD relate to ADA guidelines, because that has come up in the context of temporary pedestrian routes. So first, the American Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety, ADA, states that the needs and control of all road users, motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians through a temporary traffic control zone should be an essential part of any roadway construction, utility work, permit, and maintenance operations. Secondly, Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines, or PROAG, serves as current accepted guidance regarding pedestrian design aspects of public streets and highways, such as crosswalks, curb ramps, street furnishings, pedestrian signals, parking, and other components of the public right-of-way for temporary and permanent facilities. The City of Bloomington adopted this as their official guidance for right-of-way accessibility. Lastly, the IMUTCD standard states, almost parroting perfectly the ADA guidance, the needs and control of all road users, motorists, bicyclists, bicyclists, and pedestrians within the highway, including persons with disabilities, in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, through a temporary traffic control zone shall be an essential part of highway construction, utility work, maintenance operations, and the management of traffic incidents. So all of these entities' guidelines echo the sentiment that temporary pedestrian facilities should be accessible for all pedestrians and are in line with ADA guidance. By adding into code the requirement to meet these guidelines when submitting the application for a permit, we are then able to add to the new enforcement chapter the ability to issue a violation when these requirements aren't met in the field. I will go over enforcement later in the presentation with a specific situation regarding a walk-around. Other proposed changes to this part of code include the ability for the Transportation and Traffic Engineer to require additional items to a walk-around, such as overhead protection and other safety precautions. In some cases, the Transportation and Traffic Engineer may require pedestrian detour or other accommodations in accordance with IMUTCD or OSHA guidelines. The IMUTCD gives the following guidance about pedestrians in and around work zones. Pedestrians should not be led into direct conflicts with worksite vehicles, equipment, or operations. Pedestrians should not be led into direct conflicts with mainline traffic moving through or around the worksite, and pedestrians should be provided with a safe, convenient travel path that replicates as nearly as possible the most desirable characteristics of sidewalks or footpaths. Excuse me. In this situation, the Transportation and Traffic Engineer shall take into consideration the city's comprehensive plan and transportation plan regarding pedestrian priority. Other considerations include avoiding additional pedestrian street crossings, added travel distance, and options for detours, diversions, road nearing or road closures for automobiles in order to maintain connectivity for pedestrians. The Board of Public Works will also have the ability to require pedestrian detour based on the context of the construction site, taking into considerations the same factors as a Transportation and Traffic Engineer. Cases that need board approval are typical for sidewalk closures over fourteen days in length. And lastly, and much anticipated by many, the addition of penalties in the form of fines for failure to maintain and improve maintenance of traffic plan, which leads me to the last proposed change to Title Twelve, the addition of an Enforcement and Penalties Chapter. The overall purpose behind the removal of the section titled Violations and the addition of Chapter twelve point one zero, Enforcement and Penalties, is to have enforcement procedures in place that are more consistent with enforcement procedures in other chapters of City Code that allow staff to be more efficient and specific when issuing fines. So currently, when code is violated, enforcement is carried out through letters issued from the city's legal department. Having enforcement procedures in place for staff to be able to directly issue a legal department-approved notice of violation will be more efficient. Currently, we do those on a case-by-case basis, so that will speed things up a bit for us. These procedures are more consistent with enforcement procedures in other chapters of the City Code. We should be able to have stiffer penalties for more egregious infractions, as well as a violation scheduled to detail those fines. In the current code, violations has, and I quote, "a penalty in an amount not to exceed one hundred dollars per day", end quote. The proposed code will be twenty-five hundred dollars as the largest initial fine we could issue, and if a contractor continued to violate the provision, the maximum per day fine would continue to double until it reached seventy-five hundred dollars. If still in violation, each day's subsequent fine would continue to be seventy-five hundred dollars until the violation was remedied. So currently, we only have the ability to find for excavations without a permit because the current code is only about excavations in the right-of-way. With the proposed code, we would include types of use of the right-of-way. We added fines for those uses. So for example, we added failure to maintain approved maintenance traffic plan to the list of violations. And the photo on this slide is an example of a situation where a walk-around was required to be in place during construction of a building, and the walk-around maintenance traffic plan was approved during permitting process and approved by the Board of Public Works, and this approved plan was not adhered to, and we had no mechanism in code to find or issue a stop-work order. With proposed code, as stated previously and shown in the slide, failure to maintain approved maintenance traffic plan, including but not limited to maintaining compliant traffic control devices, this situation would have warranted a fine. In this particular case, there would have been multiple infractions and fines. Under the Proposed Enforcement Procedures Section of Code, we have added the ability to issue a stop-work order. In this example case, we may have issued a stop-work order if we had the ability to due to the ongoing issues that we were experiencing. Although what we were shooting for was for the fine to get, what we are shooting for is for the fine to get the responsible responsible party to take action that permanently remedies a violation, it would be beneficial to have a stop-work order as an option. And that brings me, that brings me to the end of my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration of the proposed Title Twelve update, which we believe meets the stated goals, as well as meeting guidance from Chapter Six of the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you again, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks so much. Okay, questions from committee members? Mr. Volan.
Yes, thanks. Excellent presentation. Were the photos, you showed two photos at the beginning of with and without the new twelve point oh eight, like the what happens if you don't have the ability to enforce a curb cut? Were those both in the city? Were those pictures both taken in the city? Can't hear you.
We can't hear you again.
Me now?
Now you can hear you, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, those were both taken in the city.
Okay.
I'm gonna keep myself unmuted because that seems to be the issue here.
Amen, that's fine. The other question is, what do you think the public's expectation should be of how quickly the city would react to infractions of Title Twelve under the new code? Like, is it right-of-way, within a day, within a week? Like, how quickly will enforcement be more prompt? I mean, like, should people expect that it'll happen? I don't know what to expect.
So enforcement will be on a case-by-case basis, of course. We will be, as we do now, going around to any sort of for example, if a sidewalk closure is approved, we go out and we check that that sidewalk closure is being maintained properly. So at that point in time, if it wasn't, we would be following up on that. And typically, what we try to do is on the very first day of any sort of closure, whether it be a lane, bicycle, pedestrian closure, go out on the first day and catch anything.
Great. Finally, I'd ask, how enthusiastic are you and the rest of the staff about the effectiveness of the new Title Twelve that you're proposing?
I think that I think we're really excited. I know I am.
But I mean, can you be more specific at all? Like, do you feel that this puts teeth into the law? Do you do you think you're gonna get compliance, or are you still gonna have trouble?
I feel like that this, this will help with compliance. I will say, in a lot of cases, when you ask somebody to fix something, they're pretty responsive. And for those that aren't, I think that having a mechanism to in place to kind of make them do it is what you need, and I think that that's going to be very effective, especially with the fines that are going to double every day until it is fixed.
I feel like that's what we had before, is we kind of made them do it, but now we make them do it. That's what this new law is trying to do, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions from committee members? Let's see, Monsta.
Yes, there were some revisions since last Friday when the ordinance was in our council packet. Could you just review what the changes were since then?
Sure. So the first change was just changing, all the changes are in the Enforcement Chapter. The first change is just the sentence at the beginning where it's saying that it's if you violate this chapter, I think we had it said, if you violate this title or something, and we wanted to hone that in to say if you violate twelve point oh eight, then specifically, because otherwise you're encompassing the whole chapter, and the whole chapter is other, other chapters of Title Twelve have their own violation process, enforcement procedures in place. So that was the first change. The other change was in response to some references to the UDO in the Enforcement Section, and because it's not completely necessary to have those there, it's a bit of redundant because it is already existing in the UDO, we decided it would just be easier to remove that as part of Title Twelve. And then the other, the next change would be an addition to how the fines kind of progress. So before, we didn't, we said twenty-five hundred dollars up to seventy-five hundred dollars. We've added a paragraph there that describes how that works a little more specifically so that it's not left to interpretation. And I guess I'll add that in that section, it does specify that so if the, if the fine is a hundred dollars for that day, then for a specific violation, and that violation continues the next day, then it would be two hundred, the next day would be four hundred, and so on and so forth. So and I believe that was it.
And I think one of the specific fines was increased, right? The failure to maintain approved maintenance of traffic plan?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, forgot about that one. We did have the failure to maintain the maintenance traffic plan at one hundred dollars for the first offense, and the feeling is that the, that is not impactful enough. It is a, an issue of public safety if that if a maintenance traffic plan is not maintained properly. So we felt like that should be escalated to the same as not having a permit at all.
I like it. Thank you.
Other questions? I have a couple very small questions slash thoughts. I know we talked about this, and we didn't land anywhere that the, in excess of twenty-four hours, but there are offenders that close sidewalks or walk-arounds during the daytime and open them back up at night. I just kind of dropped the ball on that one, I would say. What if we added something back in there about that? So, you know, we've talked sort of about the certain number of closures during a specific time period, so it wouldn't be an accumulation of hours, but a number of closures. So somebody recommended maybe two or more periods of any length within a three-day period as a violation. Something like that. What do you think about that?
Yeah, I do remember that suggestion being made. I'm not against adding that at this point of the, what is what needs to happen. Yeah.
If I can just ask a question on that one. And Sarah, you can, you can weigh in here. Is it, is it true that if somebody, if a contractor proposed to do that, if they came forward with a maintenance traffic plan that closed it during the day and opened it at night, for example, and they wanted to do that just for days on end or weeks on end? We could, we could deny that now or send them to the board or something. We have the ability to do that, we're just not required to do it. So I think, Ms. Rosenbauer, are you, are you suggesting there should be something specifying that so that it's not just, you know, staff review, making that decision? Because I think it's possible, like, I don't think that I don't think we're required to give them approval to do that, is what I'm saying.
Okay, I wasn't saying it should go to the board. Okay, so you're saying I think what I'm trying to say is it it seems like there isn't a penalty for closing like, like short-term random closures. But maybe there is?
You, is they had approval, you mean?
Yes, so let me move my comment here. Okay, so, okay, it's about providing a walk-around, right? Where, sorry, in twelve point zero eight point one one zero, where we say if the, if it's necessary to obstruct a sidewalk for a period in excess of twenty-four hours, the party has to provide a walk-around. So I guess what I'm imagining is they aren't going to close it for twenty-four hours, so what they do is they close the sidewalk for random amounts of time during the workdays or during the daytime, and then open it back up, so they weren't required to have a walk-around or a detour because there's not an in excess of twenty-four hours. But then there is a lot of time where it's unsafe because there's not a sidewalk alternative. Yes.
So I, okay, I'm recalling this conversation a little better now. And Neil's on the right track, so what I, what I recall that is and what Neil's trying to convey is we, they will have to apply for a permit to do the work that they want to do on the sidewalk. And if, if they're, if we're speaking with them and they're requesting in their permit to close the sidewalk for multiple days in a row, let's say, a week, which can be approved at staff level, and they're saying, but we can open it up every night, we still have the ability to say, that's not gonna work because that, that's still getting into that twenty-four hours. So, so if we're talking about the twenty-four hours being over so many days, or the twenty-four hours being an entire span of continuous time, either way, that's something that we can still, on our end, our end, have some control over in the permitting process. It's just does that help?
It does. I mean, you're saying it's not in code, but you could say, you could tell them we want you to have a walk-around or a detour. But you wouldn't have to tell them.
Sorry.
Oh, yes, no, go ahead.
We would always because there's no other path. In a, in a situation where the sidewalk on, on both sides, they're, they're similar in passability, accessibility, I should say, then, um, if it's not for the time period over 24 hours, then we can say you can close it for that amount of time, but it has to be reopened after that 24 hours. So, so, so they always have to have a detour or a walk-around.
Okay, so you all, you make, make sure they have one, but it is not codified that if it's under 24 hours and it's random closures, it's just sort of a best practice that you all are doing, but it's not, I'm pointing it up to my other screen, but it's not in here, right?
I think it's codified that they have to have something that if, if it's a detour instead of a walk-around, they're still required to do that because they're still required to follow IMUTCD and all these other guidelines. It may not specifically say that if you're closing a sidewalk for only eight hours that you have to, you still have to have maintenance traffic plan, but I think that, that does come through in the, in the ordinance language that they have to do that.
Okay. Okay, one more tiny thing. I'm gonna reflect on that probably tomorrow, just because I want to make sure I feel good about that. What do you think about, this is something I didn't talk about, but a constituent brought it up. Um, what do you think about in the same section, um, where we say the walk-around shall consist of a walk not less than five feet? What if we said eight feet in the downtown overlay and five feet everywhere else? Because Proag guidelines say eight feet and maybe we would want to follow that best practice.
Um, Neil, do you, uh, are you aware of where Proag says the eight-foot rule? I thought it was four feet and then five feet passable zone every 200 feet, uh, which is why we have it as always as five feet in general, so that we're not messing with measuring 200 feet and so on and so forth. But is there something I'm missing?
That would, that would be my recollection. I'd be interested to see the preference in Proag that, that notes eight feet.
Okay. I can find, I can email about it. It's minor. Okay, those are my minor questions. Okay, oh, Ms. P. Moncive?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on, um, Councilmember Rosenbarger's question about the less than 24-hour blockage of sidewalk. Um, so I'm, I'm just a little confused. So in, in the code and if it is revised by this ordinance, a walk-around would not be required if, um, the developer intends to only block the sidewalk less than 24 hours. Is that correct?
That's correct unless there's no other, um, facility on the other side, which would, you know, we would want a walk-around in that situation because there's no other accessible path.
And that's required in code?
Uh, I guess which, um, you mean the part about-
If no sidewalk on the other side of the street, then they have to do a walk-around.
Yes, because, uh, that's why the references to the IMUTCD and Proag, um, guidelines are in there, um, that, that parrot the ADA accessibility guidelines, um, that require, um, there to be a pass, uh, an accessible path for pedestrians in the event they're, the pedestrian path is closed.
Okay, so let me give you another example. So then if there's a developer who says, well, it's gonna take a week and we need to close that sidewalk for that period, but there's a sidewalk on the other side of the street. In that case, are they still required to do a walk-around because it's more than 24 hours?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Just, sorry, can I just add, there are, there are some caveats, of course, depending on the context. If, if staff had concerns about pedestrian safety in a walk-around for some reason, if there was construction, you know, reaching across the walk-around or, you know, whatever, um, then staff could require something else. But the code default is that yes, a walk-around would be required.
And what, um, what would protect, protect pedestrians if, um, like, let's say the developer said, you know, we're never gonna block the sidewalk more than 24 hours, so don't worry about it. And then for four or five hours every day, the neighbors notice that, hey, this is blocked. I can't safely get by here. Is there any recourse that the city has? And does it depend on whether that neighbor could cross the street and go the other side?
So I just want to repeat back the question. So if they, if they have approval to close the sidewalk, or you're saying if they don't have approval because they're saying we're not gonna close it?
They don't have approval to close the sidewalk.
Okay, so in that case, um, I, I would hope that that, um, constituent would reach out to the city and say, you know, maybe the, their U-report system or call and let us know. Um, otherwise I, I hope that, you know, we would be checking that site, um, and seeing what's going on as well. Um, and in the, in those cases, um, a picture is great. Cause it, it gives a timestamp and, and shows what's happening, and then that's how we would follow up with a violation.
So, and the, the, uh, developer would be in violation even if it's just for like an hour?
Yes.
Okay.
They, you should have a permit no matter how much time you're closing the sidewalk.
Okay.
I want to follow up on that. Okay, so there is, we basically have two different things happening here, where you need a permit if you're gonna close any sidewalk at any time. And then if it's over 24 hours, you need a walk-around. So I think what we don't really plan for, I'm sorry to say this again, is the, okay, because it, let's say, right, someone doesn't say they're going to close the sidewalk and then they do it randomly throughout day, workdays, okay. They can be fined for that, but if they close it enough, they're not getting fined for not having a walk-around or detour. And, and they're not providing that walk-around or detour. And so that is what I'm confused about because it, that, I, is not in this section of code. If it is somewhere else, okay, but like, should that be in this section of code that if you are going to do multiple closures, you have to have a walk-around or a detour?
I, I feel like that's a two-part question. Are you, you're asking if they, if they do a closure without approval and they don't have a walk-around, your concern is we can't find them for both things?
I would, I don't mind about the fining, just that they, the penalty is, just that I don't think in code it says if you're going to do multiple closures, you have to have a walk-around. It just says if you do a closure, you're going to be fined without a permit. But where we don't require a walk-around or detour with multiple closures that are not in excess of 24 hours.
Neil, do you-
Okay.
So you're saying that, uh, if a, if a contractor comes forward with a permit request and says, I want to close the sidewalk for six hours on day one and six hours on day two and, you know, et cetera, but it doesn't add up to more than 24 hours? Or it's, you know, just little bits each day? Is your concern that that does not require a walk-around?
Yeah.
And I think, Sarah, correct me, I, I think, I think that, that it's, that's correct. The code language does not state that it requires a walk-around, but staff has the ability and code says staff has this ability to, to say, you know, that's, you know, in this context that you should be doing a walk-around or what you're proposing is not meeting the spirit of, uh, traffic control best practices, we're gonna have you put in a walk-around. So staff can still say, you proposed doing this on all of these days. Instead, we're gonna tell you to do a walk-around. But code doesn't say, I think, that it has to be a walk-around if they do those short little bits spread out. Is that accurate, Sarah?
That's accurate. So I guess, but that could only go, you know, depending on if they say eight hours, so what, um, three, three days, they could do that in a row, um, with a detour instead of a walk-around if it's maybe an eight-hour day. Um, do you think that that is acceptable or not acceptable? Again, keeping in mind what Neil said, which we can say, that's not acceptable. We, we can still say that.
Well, actually, I would like to ask you guys that, that, um, I mean, how do you feel about only having the, the one part in code about in excess of 24 hours, but then you know, it's not clear if a walk-around is needed for anything, any multiple day closures?
Um, I, I think it, you know, for certain situations, um, you know, maybe on a cul-de-sac somewhere or, uh, something of that nature, um, maybe where it's lower pedestrian volume, not in the downtown area, not in, um, a highly walkable space, uh, I think it would be a consideration depending on the type of work they're doing and how, what, you know, how they're gonna get their equipment into that area. Um, so it's about the context of the situation more than anything, so, um,
Yeah.
That, that's what I'm com- that's what makes it comfortable, is having that ability to go, in this situation, that doesn't make sense. Um.
I can just, just add a little onto that. One of the, one of the struggles throughout this whole update for us has been, how can we be specific enough, you know, to get what we want and require what we want without, uh, you know, being so specific that we're having unintended consequences? You know, it's hard to re- write a code for something like this that accounts for every single context and situation. Uh, so we're, we're kinda trying to find this balance between, you know, being pretty specific, but allowing, you know, opportunities for staff to say, you know, no, this, this doesn't feel right. You need to do something more, or no, this isn't required. Um, and I, I think, I think staff feels like we have it set up where it's, um, it's in a pretty good spot. It, it generally, you know, especially the walk-around section, that it defaults to walk-around. It's got a lot of clear guidance in there uh, about why that should be and the requirements for it. Um, but it does give flexibility if there are safety concerns, uh, or if they want to go to the Board of Public Works and, and say that the context says it, this shouldn't be necessary. So to the 24-hour question, it's, you know, it could be something different. Uh, this is kind of an attempt to balance.
Okay, thank you. Ms. P. Moncive?
Yes, I'm, I'm a little confused at, for the 24 hours because it, it sounds like in the ordinance that it's, I would, from reading it, uh, if it's necessary to obstruct or block a sidewalk for a period in excess of 24 hours, that certainly reads to me that it's 24 consecutive hours and not that it's eight hours over three days. But I, I thought I heard Sarah or, or Neil say that it would add up. Is that the intention that it would add up to 24 hours or?
I think in general, like, we want to say 24 hours solid time period. Um, but again, it comes back to the context of a situation and, um, if it's gonna be, uh, a situation where it closes for eight hours for three days in a row, um, to accommodate some work so that they can get in and out. That's what we're tr- those are the types of situations we're trying to, um, at least give some wiggle room, uh, like, like Neil said, to, um, to give context to certain situations and not pin ourselves into, uh, uh, a corner.
Okay, so just to be clear, the requirement for the walk-around is only if it's 24 consecutive hours, but staff has the discretion that even if it's, you know, four days of six hours a day, you could still require it. Is that correct?
I think that's, that's how I read it.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? We could pause and go to public comment, I think? Okay. Okay, if you are here to comment on ordinance 20 dash 21, please raise your hand. So far, I see Mr. Alexander's hand raised. Um, okay, there's Mr. Lucas.
Yes, uh, Mr. Alexander should be, uh, able to unmute himself now.
Awesome, thanks. Uh, I'm Greg Alexander. Um, I gotta say, it's, it's really great to see that, um, the, for example, the failure to maintain approved maintenance of traffic plan fee fine, I guess, was raised, I guess, from $100 to $500. That hasn't been in any of the drafts I saw, and I was prepared to recommend that kind of change. And it's also great to see that a stop-work order is finally actually in the arsenal. Um, I, I hope staff will be able to recognize when, uh, the contractors in transit, because, oh, man, so, I mean, I, I really, my biggest criticism about the engineering department, uh, and, you know, this has been touched upon in the, in the budget hearings, is that they're, they're just not very, um, straightforward communicators, uh, when their plan doesn't meet our goals. Um, and I, I'm a straightforward communicator. I, I gotta be real clear about something. None of this is personal. I have interacted with, with several generations of public improvements managers. I've interacted with several, uh, generations of, for example, Department of Public Works heads, and they all have these same flaws. Um, and so I just want to draw your attention to, uh, was it section 12.08.110? Uh, at the end of that paragraph, it says, "The Board of Public Works may require a pedestrian detour in place of a walk-around based on the context of the construction site." I think you should simply strike that. I think there are honestly a lot of contexts where it doesn't really make sense to have a walk-around, for example, a neighborhood street. But, uh, the engineering judgment shown by the public improvements manager uniformly, uh, for at least a decade, has just been the worst possible judgment. Specifically, the heuristic, I think, the person in that position winds up using is that if there's a lot of cars and it would inconvenience the drivers to have a walk-around, then we shouldn't have a walk-around. And that is the exact opposite of a safe policy. That is exactly the opposite of a, a professionally competent policy. There has been an enormous, enormous failure on this front consistently. They have almost always said, you can close the sidewalk if it's on college. And I would say the opposite, you could never, ever close a sidewalk on college and require a pedestrian to cross college. They say if it's on Far West Third Street where there's no sidewalks and there's no, um, or there's, there's, there's no connecting sidewalks. And there, there, then we don't need a walk-around. That's the logic we've been using so far. Um, and that is exactly the wrong logic, and you guys need to outlaw that logic in an act of, 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 in an ordinance. Or I, I just, I really, I'd love to know, will staff actually use any of these powers that they're given? Another process you guys need to be aware of is how the complaints happen. I file an awful large number of U reports personally, but I walk through construction sites where I have to walk with my kids in the street about 10 times as often as I file U reports. Every construction site has daily blockages of the sidewalk. They always ignore their MUT. And staff has overseen this process for years with different staff members, and every one of them has always been satisfied with this complete and abject failure. So I'd like to see some change. I'm really excited that there might be some change. But if I walk with my kids 10 times before I file a U report and someone else, how many other people walk on these? Probably 10 people walk there for every time I walk there. So there's 100 people that have walked in the street before one U report gets filed. I want to make sure that staff sees that U report and that that becomes effective enforcement. That it doesn't, that it's not like staff goes out the next day and sees, oh, well, they fixed it, so I'm not even gonna, gonna write a notice of violation. A hundred pedestrians have walked in the street and college before the first U report was filed. And staff needs to respond to that as an emergency, as a public health emergency. And I want to, one more piece of process I gotta draw your attention to is that, um, people are willing to pay for public use or use of the public right-of-way. Um, there's a project on Kirkwood- There's a project on Kirkwood. I think it's supposed to be going on right, right now, but I haven't seen it. A private project, they wanted to use four parking spaces. Uh, they were going to block the sidewalk and part of the street and said that would take out four parking spaces. And they're, they agreed to pay $28,570 to block those spaces. So developers are willing to pay tens of thousands of dollars to use the sidewalk. And if they can just get by with maybe a $500 fine once or twice over the life of the project, that is a tremendous bargain for them. They need to feel like it is a real urgent problem that they will get a stop work order on the first violation. Or they will simply ignore it because a $500 fine, they, that's just the way of construction sites. Somebody makes a mistake, somebody sneezes on this brand new material and you just lost $500. That happens every day at, at a big construction site. We need to actually make it feel like an emergency to the construction workers and not merely a, well, I got to use this parking space for 20 consecutive days. That's actually a sidewalk. And then I finally had to pay a fine for it. They look at that and that's an acceptable ratio. They make that as a rational business decision. They just live with it. So I'm sorry to be down on this. I'm really excited that there may finally be teeth, but I have just seen no evidence that staff is willing to admit that they simply were not enforcing any of these laws at all forever. And we are in a crisis situation now. And without that admission, I can't have any faith that there's going to be, uh, progress. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Are there any other comments? And then we'll go to Mr. Bolen.
I'm, I, I don't agree with Mr. Alexander's assessment. First of all, I think the presentation was very thorough, very well done, and I appreciate it. Secondly, um, I certainly don't think present company is incapable of communicating. I've felt like I've gotten clearer answers, uh, tonight than I ever have from anyone involved in engineering at the city. So, so far I'm encouraged, very encouraged. I think that, uh, also Mr. Alexander underestimates, um, the power of higher fines of $2,500 fines. And I keep going back to the noise ordinance. It was as unenforceable as the excavation ordinance was until we got rid of the complicated rules for measuring noise. And we said first fine 50, second fine 100, third fine, and future fines $500. If the city has written any $500 fines, I can't think of them, okay? Because the once or twice is enough. People get the message. I, I do share some concern about, and this is what led to a question I asked before about, um, uh, what, you know, like, how will the initial context be done? But I think that, uh, engineering staff has said pretty clearly, we haven't had the tools to do enforcement. And that's why we've, we see the behavior reflected among, uh, contractors. They just, like, it's cost of doing business. They just, uh, don't need to worry about it too much. So I'm, I'm very encouraged, but I also, um, certainly have heard enough concern from a couple of my colleagues here to think that, I mean, if this is not ready, let's have a second committee meeting and, uh, tweak the things that concern councilmembers Rosenbarger or Piedmont Smith. You know, I, I do want to get it right this time and I want to know that city staff feel confident to enforce the law. Like they, they, you know, I don't want to say enthusiastic about it, but I mean, uh, you know, uh, I, I, I can say that I'm used to occasional lackadaisical enforcement of certain city code. And I know that that breeds sort of, uh, lack of faith in, uh, the city code. Uh, but I, I, uh, so that's why I'm kind of ambivalent here. Uh, for the most part, I am, you know, excited about this. I just want to feel more confident that, um, not just that there are teeth in the law, but they'll, they'll chomp down on somebody. I'm sort of making shark metaphor here. I don't want to be baby shark anymore. I want to be, you know, daddy shark. Let's, 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 uh, bite down on enforcement.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I, I think I would like to hear what other committee members think on that. Are others ready to wrap it up tonight or do, would you like to work on it over the next couple of weeks?
I think, uh, wrapping it up is a good idea. I think it's ready to, uh, go to this. And then I, I would guess, uh, Ms. Gomez and Mr. Copper would come back and say they need it tweaked in a different way. It looks like there's been a lot of good work done on it. So I, I, I leave the judgment to the experts in the city and I think I'm, I'm pretty happy with it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Piedmont Smith?
Um, I really do appreciate all the, the work that has gone into this and I think that, um, it's a wonderful move in the right direction. Um, but I would like to, uh, have another committee meeting. There are just a few details that I'd like to review and see if we can make, make things a little bit stronger to protect pedestrian safety.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple other questions to ask, but I think, um, since the more folks are wanting to go to a, a second meeting, I'll not ask those right now. And I think honestly, if anyone wants to say anything else, we can, or else we can just plan on reconvening at the next option, at the next opportunity, have a committee meeting, which is
The 21st or the 28th?
I believe it's the 28th.
Okay. Okay. So any other comments, questions that, Mr. Copper?
I was just gonna ask, um, does, uh, do committee members anticipate sending questions or suggestions to staff in advance of that meeting on the 28th? I, I don't feel like we have a good sense of, uh, what you're looking for.
Yes, so I could compile and, um, I think maybe what we could try, that what we could aim for is to get it all worked out and then review it at the next committee meeting. Right? And, uh, be, have it ready for approval. Mr. Bolen?
Well, I, I would just, uh, caution that, I mean, I think what you're talking about is amendments. And to simply put, uh, over the next, uh, normally it's two weeks between committees. Now it's three, but over the next week or two, you know, members should get help articulating, uh, what they want to amend and, uh, develop language that can then be given to staff by a week before the committee hearing. So that way they, they can respond to it properly and be prepared to talk about it on the 28th. So really, if you, if you're seeking amendments, you should have them done by the 21st.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so thank you for coming tonight and I'm excited.
Yeah. Sorry, do we need a motion to continue this discussion to the 28th or we don't?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's already scheduled. Yeah.
I think the, the absence of a due pass motion means that the committee will have a second meeting on the 28th. And certainly if there are amendments, uh, prepared ahead of that, uh, we will, uh, distribute those in the council's legislative packet and share those with staff and the public. Uh, if there are written questions and answers that, uh, committee members are formulating and staff provides, uh, we can also post those publicly, uh, so that the public can, uh, can see that exchange as well.
Yeah.
I just got to ask, uh, does, does staff understand the process that I just talked about?
Um, I, I just had a question about, so at the next committee meeting, then we would just be discussing the amendments, uh, and not going through the full presentation at that time again?
That's right.
Correct. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
I would want to promise a time limit, but I can't, I can't.
Understood.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much for being here and working on this. It's been really a great process so far, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, I hear there's a presidential debate. Is that true?
Vice presidential. Vice presidential.
Oh, vice. Okay, I see. No, I don't want to watch it. Okay, well, thank you, everyone. I think we can wrap up for today and see you in three weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you all.